Dear Heavenly Father, I just want to thank you for another beautiful day that you have bestowed upon us. Dear Lord, I thank you for the rain that you have blessed us with over the past week and I thank you, dear Lord, for the rain that is coming. I just pray that you put an edge of protection on our city as the storms come through this week. Dear Lord, without water we'll nourish the ground and the fields here within our grass areas. Dear Lord, I ask for special hand of prayer and blessing on our district leaders. Tonight, as they meet, that you will be able to guide them in making decisions that will benefit our district and our community. And put us in the direction that will lead us towards you. Dear Lord, I just ask that you will bless the leaders of our schools, our teachers, our staff and our students. That you will send your hand of grace and mercy especially during this time of the year. During the season in which they're preparing for spring break and the end of the school year. Dear Lord, I just pray for guidance and direction for all of us as we are in this time. Dear Lord, as we live throughout the rest of this school year, I just pray that you will send your hand of grace and mercy to all of us in this community. And that you will be with us in every position that is named. In all reality, honor and glory to your name, in your precious Jesus' name, amen.
Okay, when we get to the approval of the agenda and those agenda qualifications, I would like to start with a couple of tweaks. I would like to first make a motion to add a vote to item six. Item six, which currently calls for discussion on the qualifications for the superintendent posting. I would just put it up for the board to have a discussion and a co-meeting vote so we can move forward. Okay, so to do that, we'll need a bar second, I vote.
I make a motion to approve that.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Yes.
All right, the vote, all right, motion passes. We're gonna move that to seven. Excuse me, that's important, I'm sorry. To have a vote. All right, next, I would like to make a motion. I would like to make a motion that we move the board comments to the end of the meeting. Putting those at seven, giving us each a chance to give a five-minute recap of our opinion of the discussion tonight. Maybe even share our vision of what we're looking forward into the future. So just simply move the board comments to the end.
Um, explain.
Board comments is it, well, let's go ahead, go through it and then we'll have our discussion. Currently, board comments is five, I'll just move it to seven. Okay?
You see it's not about five minutes?
Giving you five minutes of each board member that would like to participate to share. Okay, so that is a motion.
Can you move to work on that to number seven?
Okay, any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Yes.
Okay, so show of hands, opposed?
Aye.
All right, motion fails. All right, final motion. I would like to make a motion to add to line item seven now, a vote for the immediate termination and violation of our code's contract. It would be seven.
I make a motion to approve number seven.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor, show of hands. Okay, all opposed? Okay, motion fails. All right, moving on. Ask for a motion to approve the agenda and propose the agenda modifications.
Mr. Chairman, I would approve the agenda and propose the agenda modifications.
Seven, any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? All right, motion passes, so, uh, board comments now move, well, we go against that, some board comments now. Anyone who would like to share?
I will.
Okay.
This is my board comments about the superintendent position.
Well, for one being one instant, the discussion for the job apartments, that's we all have.
Will you pull your mic down?
Again, we all have our opinion. Okay, yes. All right, moving on, next, we have the adoption of action item, asking for a motion to discuss and vote on the job apartments for superintendent posting.
Mr. Chairman, I would discuss and vote on the job apartments first.
Okay.
Okay, any discussion? All right, here we go. Okay, we'll go, move me out of our discussion, which is what we talked about, then we'll in there vote. Discussion, very discussion. Okay, so let's just start that over there, let's just, let's just proceed with our discussion and then we'll maybe, I mean, we'll move the board after discussion. Okay, so let's just, just go and check yourself, be writing this, ask for a motion for discussion first, and let's go through this.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to discuss the requirements for the next superintendent position.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? All right, motion passes, discussion beginning. And, uh, to begin, there were.
Why, you said, and we have to move to action or?
Well, we're gonna wait the school wheels just out. At the end, we can go to the same procedure with a motion to have a vote if we can get there.
So we have to move to vote back?
Well, we, we started to try to provide a vote and it was inappropriate, so we tried to correct ourselves. Now we're having a discussion, we did a motion and a second, and we passed it, so we're without a sense to have a discussion of the qualifications. If you'd like us specifically to correct, I'd be glad to be corrected, but I'm not at this point, I don't know if I should be corrected on that.
You know, you might be getting a label, this, this degree, but then we had to be motivated by some.
Mr. Fallon, you have any assistance that we need here, or are we allowed?
I couldn't hear the last part.
Yeah, are we allowed for discussion right now on the qualifications?
I mean, you got to discuss that out in the open, I can't think of the exact.
Well, we're going, we made a motion, uh, and a second, and we voted to have our discussion. We had began this process, I concluded a vote, which was on the stage, so we were going to then take that after this discussion. So now we're trying to clean that up and just have our discussion, which I think we just moved the correct procedure. So again, I feel like we're in order. So can we move forward?
Excuse me, that's gotta be discussed.
Okay, so now we've got all time of oral discuss, so let's begin. Go ahead.
I don't have anything rehearsed at all about what I'm gonna say, I'm just gonna just speak from my heart. First of all, the reason why I'm sitting in this chair right now is because the people voted for me to do a job that they felt that was all I could and that I would do the best job in the interest of the kids, the students, the teachers, faculty and staff. It's not about me, this, this has nothing to do with me, that's not why I'm in this chair, I'm in this chair for everyone else. And I've heard over the last, on my day here, so many things from so many people. And it's very important to me to listen to what the public has to say and their opinions. And I feel like if the public has a reasonable request, which I think that what I'm about to speak about is reasonable, that we, that that is the most important thing, that we can take that into consideration and rate it. Because if it's, if we don't have them supporting our system, then, you know, our system isn't gonna be the best that it can be. So with, with that being said, I just wanted to, I have just like some bullet points here, and I'll, I'll be fast. I don't want to sit here forever and take everyone's time, but as to the requirement of the doctorate degree for hiring, uh, being required for the new superintendent, I, I cannot be on the road with that at all. Um, I, I think that takes out so many other candidates that may be a better fit for the job. And if, if the best candidate that we hire has a doctorate degree, then that's great. But I don't think that that should be a requirement for this position. Um, so a hundred and forty school districts in Alabama, eight have superintendent with a doctorate. That's eight out of one forty, which is like ninety-nine point nine four percent. One out of a hundred forty is a lack performing district, which equals zero point zero zero one percent, that's enterprise. Um, most of the districts have superintendents without doctorates, greatly outperform districts that have superintendents with doctorates, doctorates. Um, there's no direct correlation in performance, little bit of evidence that holding a doctorate will make someone a better superintendent. Leadership skills, decision-making, community engagement are what really matters. Of a superintendent who pulled a doctorate in Alabama, only one district was rated enterprise. Focus on practical skills, skills such as strong leadership, problem-solving, communications and communication skills are more necessary than degrees. Um, increases diversity by attracting candidates from various educational and career backgrounds. Applicants have built relationships with other districts and states. Nearly a hundred percent majority, ninety-nine point nine four percent of other school districts in Alabama have superintendents without doctorates. I know that for probably repeating myself, I just don't want to miss anything. Um, experience over education, group and leadership versus doctorate and administrative skills, school district growth, discipline management, practical experience, more value, it's more value than degrees. Strong leadership track record is the best indicator. Um, and many doctorate requirements for this position limits the candidate pool. Excludes highly qualified applicants who may have extensive leadership experience, they just didn't pursue, uh, turn over grades. You can always screen applicants based on experience, time and cost barriers. Um, strong leaders prioritize, prioritize stance on experiences over schooling, degrees take turn of money. They don't always translate to making a better leader in their craft and valuable time can be lost while focusing on the degree as a requirement. And that's, that's all the points, so. I don't want to take up everyone else's speed, so I just wanted to say that.
For everyone involved, let me go list the, if we have any doctoral requirement that we speak of, there's a few more listed here, there is. Uh, the previous successful experience as a superintendent, willingness to relocate, relocate within thirty minutes of the event. Um, the experience as a classroom teacher, principal, administrator, assistant, principal or superintendent with at least five years, which I believe is state requirements to recruit. Uh, and hold an Alabama certificate in administration and leadership, which I think is in state department. So four of the five are requirements that don't concede schools, or someone has added to the list requirements that are not required from the state. But when I say someone, I bring up a good point because I'm a school board chairman, I don't know what that means really, but I didn't have anything to do with these five things, you know, this list, and I don't know who put these five things on this. We're, we're here to discuss both of these five departments that seek the state department, but who made this? We, we, I would give.
Power of the board.
Well, what power of the board made this list? Bless today.
When you finish speaking, I'll.
Go ahead.
Are you finished?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. You know, from, from two thousand five, at this time, we probably had to undergo hiring a superintendent maybe three, four times. And I did some research and I think it differed with some information that, um, that you did, that you put up there. But, um, we have a hundred and forty-three superintendents in Alabama. And, uh, those hundred and forty-three, eighty-six have registered under a doctorate degree. Uh, past four, uh, superintendent has, uh, past superintendent has all taken doctorate degrees except for one. So, you know, it's not a new thing for us. And we put out the paperwork and we said the, um, applicants who have a high school education, we get a lot, we still might choose a doctorate degree to just begin. So when you do look at your, you, you do look at your applicants, you look at everything. And, uh, from past experience, a doctorate degree is, is a lot in, you know, just like you go to school. I mean, in my school, we have what we call a minimum standard, but now it's changed to a, a performance standard. So minimum is what it is, minimum, but we don't have to accept the minimum. Dosen City has eight thousand students. And, uh, and looking at what's in the wide range, we have the highest number of students. And then, uh, I think Henry Christian County, maybe six thousand five hundred and fifty-five percent from there. And then the Henry and, and, uh, also like maybe two thousand, I mean, those run by figures. Dosen City, you know, these way, of course, these students though. And I don't see why it would be such a, a dangerous thing since we generally look at the best applicant and we look at everything, we look, look at applicants. And we see that the quality is the, uh, maybe one of the best qualifications. We're not here just to have a person, a super, a personal platform job, just because we can't. Now, those are some of the qualifications, and every year we tweak, we tweak our, 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 you know, our problems. And this is the year, another year where we tweak them.
We haven't been tweaking. We use the same requirement each year the last three times I've voted.
No, sir.
Yes, I gotta copy them. It's the same state requirement each time. Exactly.
And so, you know, that's, that, that's, that's, you know, what's going in. And so, you know, if you have a, I mean, you know, we're going, we all have individual ideas. I know I've my problems, I didn't set them for ages as some others, but that's, you know, what I'm realizing, I'm leaving education. I have always served education at the high school. And, uh, so that's, that's me coming in from district one. We got just two, three, four, five, six, we have a lot of this, we all have, we all have different backgrounds and we come in and bring out all the potential. But we got people that elected us, just like they say, people elected you for that purpose and I'm going to do my job. And I'm not going to be bullied, I'll build my job. And I have, but same, that's the board, this is the whole board asking, will you? If we don't do this, this is gonna happen, this is what's been said out there. I've gone from first grade on through college and I've never been bullied, and I don't plan to start being bullied now. I'm going to always go by my convention. And if there's a problem with that, my district will know.
So does your convention, look at this audience, every principal, our system, every teacher, every, every person, our system being unqualified for this position? Because you eliminated every single don't concede staff member from contention. That means every one of these people are qualified.
Well, I'm gonna make myself, I'm, I, I just have a necessity, I, I did myself. I can not, I'm not saying, you know.
But none of these people are qualified.
You know, I know we're in a world that's a little different now, we got, we have a precedent there. Yes, so, see, I'm just telling you, this is supposed, this is what goes on. This is what goes on. And no one person can make a decision on this vote.
Correct.
And when we learn that, we can go on. There have been many times, now that it's not voting. We have to take it and go on. But there are some people that feel like they don't have to pick, they're gonna get up and make, oh, close the direction, get people, come out people, this is what's going to be. But we haven't voted on that for us, so we talked about getting my mind on our vote, we haven't voted on it. That's not been voted on by this board, this board has not voted on those requirements for superintendent. This board has not done that, and I think we're free to have our. But that's all, and that's the real deal out, okay, it's a tremendous day to start there. But what you feel like as a superintendent, you have.
Well, who put, who put it out here tonight? Because we have four requirements above the state standard. Someone in this room raised their hand and tell me you're the one that made this list of four extra requirements, please. I think it's fair that we should all in this room know who's steering the conversation. Because tonight, technically, we're voting on these four qualifications. That somebody in this room most likely decided was going to be our conversation. And I, the board chairman, had nothing to do with it. So I don't know if it's here, 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 but someone needs to raise their hand and say, yes, I made the four qualifications.
That confirms it was not me, I had no doubt.
Thank you, sir. So we know it wasn't superintendent. Who made the four qualifications and decided to steer this discussion tonight? I'm just asking, are there anything else? I'll say I didn't do it.
Neither did I, but I'm asking, are those qualifications not in post, I mean, is it?
They're not.
No.
The last three times we advertised, none of those were in there.
Okay. Then I'm done, I can't help it.
So they just, they just popped on paper for us to vote. Somebody put on a paper. In a city that don't is supposed to trust us, but it did pop on paper.
But then you text us about the doctorate degree.
Tell me more.
Did you text us about the doctorate, well, how you wanted the doctorate degree?
I shared it, I read it.
You said, okay, I got it.
Okay.
You said, okay.
Have you ever said that?
That's actually not a vote, even.
Well, that's why we're gonna be, this is not a fun situation. So we, 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 we have talked about children in months, I'll say that. We have talked about children in months, and, and you said, text out, that's what you think we all do. And when, when we did agree with you, you got upset that you are.
We know.
They got speaker. Oh, they got speaker.
And this will never happen.
Well, speaker, speaker, you're right, I think.
I didn't get it, but you said, okay.
What did it actually say, right?
What choice do we want for something, what, what?
No, produce it.
Do you know what you mean?
Produce it. Stand by and produce it.
I don't know, okay, sir. We, we have voted, that's, we don't vote on anything.
So, so nobody wants to admit that they made the list of four qualifications that are so important.
They are not important.
You're not here for this class.
Okay, so we'll move past that one, I think. I think we all understand that. Moving on with the discussion.
I'd like to bring up a couple of points. I'm a deep dive information person, I wanna know, I wanna know what successful districts look like, I wanna know what successful people look like. I'm listening to content every day in the car, and I can start a conversation about it, but I wanna know what successful people look like. And I want my children to grow up knowing what successful people look like, so I spend this weekend doing a deep dive on a lot of this. Um, found it very interesting that eight Ivy League universities, only five of them, their teams have PhDs. That's why I believe that's your top of your rest of the best universities, five of them have PhDs. I mean, three universities that are your top, living in the top tier do not have leaders who have PhDs. Forty-five percent of the nation's largest large superintendents have PhDs. One resident, an administrative United States, has a PhD. Nineteen members that are still not representatives right now have PhDs. That's to me great, if you go that far in education, that's awesome, but it's not for everybody. And some of these people are in bed seven days a day and investing students and aren't taking the time to get that doctorate compared to investing in our, in our children, in our system, in these people, and I really am okay with excluding those people because they don't have a doctorate. That, that is something to be, having a doctorate means something to me. A superintendent of Mobile is the highest paid superintendent in the state of Alabama. He has the largest district in the state of Alabama, he also does not have a PhD. He is someone I talked to multiple times at state trainings, and when we talk to that man, the passion that's in his eyes is very evident. The things that are happening in this district are things I watch for in my own, but I talk to people in the district that I've sat down with or remember after our, our state trainings and asked them, what are you doing? And the passion that that man has to the district, not his career, not the higher degree, but for the children in that district, he can tell you about it. He can tell you about some of those kids, and he has got pride in his eyes when we talk to you about these kids individually, then he knows them, and that's what matters to me. And that's what Dosen City should be, that's what Dosen City should be, and we have so many people like that. We talk so many times about growing our own, that we want our students to go on to work in Dosen and to be leaders in Dosen and to come back and teach in Dosen. We want our teachers to get administrative degrees, to go on and to be principals and to lead the district. And now they're saying that we don't want them to apply to be superintendent, because that's what we're saying when we say they have to have prior superintendent experience. We're saying none of you are qualified because none of you have been a superintendent. And I'm not saying that the first order to choose comes from this district, but I am saying that we have grown into a lot of really good people who have put their heart and soul into this district and could be incredible leaders of this district, that know Dosen and know the kids and have thought for this system. People that care about us, though, though, we're a little different out here in Dosen, I'm gonna live a little longer, so I can say that. People who know and understand Dosen, that matters, that matters to me, a whole lot more than the degree that they hold. Uh, our state superintendent, Eric Mahoney, got his PhD the year before he became a superintendent. Became a superintendent, obviously someone came and chose with no prior experience, seventeen years later, he became our state superintendent. Someone had to give him a chance, someone had to say, I'm willing to hire this man who's never been a superintendent before and will help him get some. I'm not okay, I'm not okay with saying that I have to have doctorate. I'm not okay with saying that I have to have prior superintendent experience. If in the end, we choose someone with a doctorate and we choose someone with prior superintendent experience, great. But that's not to me what the most qualified person was like, and it shouldn't be what the most qualified person was like. The state has a whole entire program, a superintendent's academy, where you can, oh, you know, you have parts, there are thirty-two people last year that attended the state superintendent academy. These are educators, principals, the principals in the system who would like to further go down that path and learn what it's like to be a superintendent. Of those thirty-two, eight of them have PhDs. The state doesn't require a PhD, so attend their superintendent training. I do believe that Dosen is a credible system. I do believe that we should have the best of the best, but I don't think PhD is the best of the best. They may, they may have them, but they may not. And saying that they have to have one, so here are the limits, the options out there. And I would hate to turn away somebody who could be the best option for this system because they didn't have one of those two things. To tell them, you're not even qualified. If we really want to reach, raising our own, growing our own, and then turn around and say that not you, we don't want any of you, none of you are good enough. Everyone hates everything that we believe in, I feel like as a district, because we talk about law, we talk about growing our own. Sorry, I'm trying to leave my, I was trying to talk about growing our own law, as a board, we talk about that a lot, we hear that a lot. We talk about that in public, we hear it from principals, and we're gonna turn around and say that none of you are good enough because none of you have been a prior superintendent. Somebody gave them a chance without a PhD when he was superintendent and account, without a PhD, and that was his first superintendent position, somebody gave him a chance. Over and out, long to be that district to give people a chance. I'm just, I feel like it hates everything that we are, as a city, and I can't give behind either of those things.
I think our district is at a point where we're just beginning to have consistent improvement. I would say for a longer span of time for a superintendent, um, in both my terms. Um, I believe the state has set a standard, the state does have a standard, I'm okay with the state here standard. The state does have a standard. I'm okay with setting our standard at the minimum. Uh, it's frustrating that our funding is at the minimum. We can't change that, but we could ask for a higher standard for our superintendent. Uh, I don't think we're in a position, both sides and where we are in our, um, growth, to be a you know, on the job training place for a new superintendent. Uh, I don't disagree with necessarily what you said, either anybody said. I was anxious about these requirements. Uh, email, text, and possibly, um, executive session. Specifically about the doctor and the previous experience. I just gave my opinion. I don't know how the docs have on the recommendation. I just think it's a standard that we can set. It's, I think it's only where the place to be a good on the job training. Um, I think it would, sorry for saying that, I'm on, um, I think it would set us back. Since we're just trying to discuss it, since apparently we're both, uh, I would also like for us to entertain the idea of a surge of services provided by different organizations.
I just hope the board will pay attention. Because
We are.
I can tell you that I'm invested in this school system. You can look on one side of this board and you can see people invested in this school system. And you look on the other side and you can see some people there a long time. And I think I just got five superintendents compared. It ain't been over there. So I hope our board will pay attention.
Right, you made a comment about things are changing and, and this growth happening. And that's something that I have also developed on research on. I think there's some different areas of, um, education. And there's a book out called Higher Calling and it talks about how education is moving forward and I'm going to have to step outside the bounds of normal education, what we think of normal education. But it's not always the higher degrees, that people running businesses, CEOs, they're going after people who are more HR or PR instead of that actual running it because they think like, so people love them and who can do those things. So there's a great movement in the business sector and the education sector to find people who are more tapped in, invested, and not so much spend their time in college. I one hundred percent understand where you're coming from. And it's hard to, to make that growth and change and to, to keep up with the times. I, my kids have to set up myself on every time I get a, I'm not, we have some technology because they're driving insane. But I have to keep up with it because times are changing, things are changing. We can't say that what we did twenty years ago, or even ten years ago, needs to be our model for what we're doing now. Because things are changing, kids are changing, our country is changing. And we have to be able to, be able to step outside that and we are, whoever we choose, we will be holding to a higher standard. But putting that in the requirements doesn't do that. It just eliminates people who could be pretty amazing, who could go on and ring old Dosen City the way they were trying. So we, we hired our basketball coach. When he came, I was very impressed with his speech. But when they, when they interviewed him, talked to him, he said, I'm really excited about Dosen. I'm excited to be a part of Dosen and the culture of Dosen. I'm excited to get to ring all I know of that and learn what Dosen has to offer me. And if you go onto a basketball game, you see the culture that that game has created. It was pretty amazing. And listening to him talk, he bought it. He said, this is an amazing place to be. And I want to be here and I want to be a part of that. And that's what I'm looking for in a superintendent. Yes, they need to know what they're doing, but they also, you put a lot of really good people around you and you don't have to know anything else for everything. I had no idea what I was doing. My friend took a four-year course of robotics for the my speech. And he said, you're gonna be sewing over here. Hey, those first two years, it sure did feel like you're drowning. And I was. And I called anybody and I knew that I could. And I thought, and I was passionate about it. And I don't feel like I was failure for two years. I felt like I've learned a lot. I'm still learning a lot. Um, you're right, because it's not a system to learn in. But you're saying that like we don't have really good people already in place in a lot of places. But we may put somebody in this their first time, but we not have a whole lot of people in this system who could bully them out and help them. I would love to be the, the forward group in the system that does those things, that pushes on, or says we do things a little bit differently and does that losing outside the box. We have DCC, we have so many things that, that officials don't have around state because we are willing to think outside the box and say, not everyone's gonna get a college degree. If we're willing to do all those things, why can't we put our money around that? As opposed to you can say that we as a board are also willing to change the way that we perceive what a superintendent looks like.
Okay, again, remember it's the doctorate thing that gets the conversation mostly, but there's the experience requirement. That stuff will be over that get called a week.
Don't pat, don't pat, shut me on this, but if, if my memory serves me right, when Dr. Nichols, he was a deputy superintendent before he became superintendent. And then Leon Cobb was not superintendent before he came to Dosen. And he stayed for eight years. Who, who had superintendents in the past that did not require, you know, this degree for the position. And I, I just, I just cannot get on board with this being an requirement. And I do not agree with the on the job training. I, I do not agree with that statement. I, I, that, I don't, I do not think that is what it would be. And, um, it's okay to disagree, but I'm not trying to argue with you, but I have just, I can't get on board with this. And I don't want to cause people to not apply because there's, there's stipulations in there that they may not have. Because I think there are great people out there who may not have this, that would do a better job than someone with, possibly. I don't think that makes you a better superintendent. I think that works for someone that doesn't. I also don't agree with that we should live thirty, within thirty minutes of Dosen. My opinion should live in Dosen, should be invested in Dosen. Your tax pay dollars should go to Dosen and go pay your salary. Those tax dollars should go to Dosen and to Dosen.
Okay, so I'll finish and say to this, there just seems to be a clear plan of something. I'm not on the side that knows what it is. There's just the three of us on one side and four on the other. I'm rarely in the oven. So I don't know what's going on right now. But I do, I do know what election's gonna be. And Dosen will better this. All we need is a leader of integrity, an absolute person that we know, that we see, that we don't have to doubt. We've got a central office full of experts every capacity. You got the support to do it. Get a leader that you know live here. Go take a chance and guess on someone that might care from another town. We've done that five times, four times. I lived it, I worked it, I was an employee. I know how it feels when it goes wrong. Can we just get it right? Can we just find someone that we know? We don't have to doubt. We don't have to question. It's absolute because it's proven day after day, year after year. We've seen it. We've seen the work ethic. We've seen the care. The kids see it. We have those people in the school system. Why would we go outside? Why would anyone even suggest that no one in our system can qualify for this position?
Father, excuse me, can I say something?
Yes, sir.
Father, you saying we, we, we have many, uh, people in our system who have a doctorate degree. It might not be...
You eliminate everyone in our system in your list and you may or may not pay.
You asked, you asked, I asked you to speak.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we have plenty of people with doctorate degrees. It might not be your friends. But we have plenty of people with doctorate degrees. So we have not been eliminating people in the area. We are including...
You want to say that?
If you hire...
Your hands.
If this board hires somebody that's a friend of mine, I'll get off of it. I don't have to deal with this board. So don't worry about a friend of mine.
I said, I asked you. I was, I was saying, we have plenty of people, since the doctorate agreed this, the situation now that we are all up here discussing.
And we have experienced.
People with the doctorate degree. This is how it first came out because we discussed it in, in executive session. And somebody leaked it out. What we talked about in the executive session went out. The next day, it went out. Now that's the day.
Don't worry about yourself.
And we talk about, and we talk about a lot of things in the executive session that need to stay right there. So we don't, we don't need all, we don't need all of this. That's, that's it. So it was going out. Now, all you can do is work with what you have here and now. And stop seeking out...
Well, we can work with what we have here because there's no other qualified.
Well, we got someone there. We, you, who are you?
They do not have the experience because they superintendent, so they get on the block. They get on the block because that means that they get a lot, Brenda. Okay.
I mean, that's, 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 that's true. I mean, it means that nobody...
In our system.
...that apply based on those.
No, 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 never misses or did.
And all I've ever heard for the last, it's my eighth year, is why can't we get somebody local? Why can't we get someone that is invested in our kids, our teachers, our staff, all of that, instead of getting people from here, there, and everywhere?
Especially if it's gone on several times and we, we have a doctorate program. So we get some, we don't have, we have got a local person.
Criminal to handle.
That's local. There are enough that's local.
That's, that's local.
I have asked for, I have thought they're gonna help you.
I mean, I guess local could, you could spread the branders, I guess, outside of Dosen's city. I, I guess that's what you mean, but I mean, I don't want to solve this problem because...
Saul takes care of himself. He changed the school board. He changed the community, I promise you. He changed the city. This town will follow its schools. It will follow its school board. It's coming in a couple months. You want to fix Dosen, you fix us. Please. We're gonna move on with a motion to vote on this topic. So again, this is to vote on the five items listed as being required for our superintendent's certification. One, white, pink motion.
Can a question?
We're exempt of five items, this is the one question superintendent. Same.
Okay, the discussion. All in favor, show a hand, please. Oppose? Thank you very much. Good luck.
Can a question be asked?
You can. I would be right after being.
Sir?
We'll, we'll get to you after being.
I was just wondering what the other two...
Just part it out, I guess. Just part it out, go on ahead.
How, how can you vote on a document?
Okay. I have one. It's good.
If no one can admit to the document, why can't you cancel it?
How can you vote on a document nobody admits to?
That's not a binding legal document that can be voted on. It was ridiculous.
And I want to know Ms. Hill's opinion on it because she nor Franklin told us to vote it at all, uh, said anything.
You don't want to speak in public?
My name is April. You know, we care for the public, that we gotta like, that we call it, that we vote for the public. I don't have words to say to the public. I've been in this public for about two weeks and they called me and I'm taking that, um, account of what I've heard. And I've heard both sides. And this is where I stand. So I'm listening.
If this is something that's stupid in the system, people that call you, you can't defend it. Absolutely.
I've got students in the system. Okay, we got you. I got control now. All right, so, uh, no executive session. Uh, we're going to announce new business at March eighteenth at five thirty. Special call, board meeting. Uh, no, 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 let's go right. We got execute, you're right. It's March eighteen, regular school board meeting. Uh, and then Tuesday, break at five thirty. It's a, uh, what's that company? Special call, okay. All right, so that's for motion adjourned. Move to adjourned. Discussion. All in favor?
Any?
Oppose? Most of us.